...sources that are out there. And, you know, they can, I think they can get some things going. So, that is certainly one of the recommendations of this blueprint. So, I just wanted to end this with Williamson Park. Williamson Park is one of the most valuable, or one of the great amenities that I think, that Morrisville Downtown has, that I think that is really undervalued. There's a lot of space there that really doesn't seem to have much of a purpose. And it's right next to a dense urban community. There are a ton of resources out there in terms of brands and assistance that could really create a fabulous park. And I think Morrisville would be well positioned to get a lot of that funding. Because it's an existing urban park, it serves a community, it has some lower-income residents. And if we transform Williamson Park, it really has a potential to sort of highlight the downtown. If people are gonna come to visit Williamson Park, whether it's a festival or some other type of event, or they just wanna hang out and have a picnic, they're right next to the downtown. They could go get a sandwich and they could just walk down to the park. I know, I've been told many times that people, or workers over Trenton, come across to the levee. The levee's another great amenity that people do understand the value of. But if we provide that link between the levee and the downtown, we're gonna further economic development efforts that much more. So I think that Williamson Park is really sort of a key location that the borough should really look to, you know, seek to transform. And our vision for Williamson Park looks a little bit something like, a little bit like that. We improve landscaping, we provide an entryway, we provide a place for people to gather. And I think that it could be something that, you know, people are aware of all over Bucks County and all over Tret-Nurse County. So, you know, I'm excited to be a part of this process. I think it's a really good plan and I hope that everybody else does. Certainly, we'd welcome any questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was pretty exciting last year when we had that announced. I think we were all surprised and we thought, okay, how many people would show up to it? And it was, it was really busy. And it was, it was nice to hear everybody go back and forth with their ideas. And I know that your team has worked very hard to bring some of this analysis all together. The survey was kinda neat because it got everyone able to put their idea in. So it got a better community. What was, what was the things that they wanted out of, out of all those things they could pick from? And that's how that analysis came up with at the very end. All that data went to them. And they put it all together and that's where they come up with this plan. So it was really everyone that came and the residents put in and said, you know, they wanted the recreational, they wanted something with the downtown, they wanted all that in there. And it kinda put all this together for us. So that was, that was kinda neat. Anybody else wanna ask any questions?
I just wanted to thank you again for coming to our last few business outreach community meetings that we've had.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty exciting.
On Bridge Street. I think that a lot of our businesses are really excited to take part in this. So, I think we have a great future ahead of us.
I agree.
I guess for me it would be, the next step with this is to get some of this implemented. The zoning end of it, I guess is a big thing. We have to figure out the, I guess, exact area that we need to change the boundaries.
I think so, yeah. I mean, I'm talking about the C1 district, although that could be, C1 is kinda, falls, various boundaries, that can be changed. Could be an overlay district, that's an option. The only thing I don't like about the overlay districts is they generally allow what's underneath. My thought is just a new district and maybe focus it a little bit more than the C1 district is right now.
Okay. What would be the next step, I guess, at this point? All this data came back and this is it, so where, what would be our next step?
Well, I think the next step is really a matter of organization.
Okay.
How do you wanna proceed? It has been done with a government, our council designated, maybe our locations. Mostly it's done with nonprofits. People, nonprofits are generally more nimble, just sort of free of the political process too. People can't say, well, you know, that's because council wants to do this. They're more independent. And, you know, they're just, they're just faster moving. So, you could have a nonprofit that's set up and it could have, say, a representative from, say, Borough Council, and then a representative from the business community, and a president, and all different types of representatives. Generally, the nonprofits are, they can get the same assistance and funding that, you know, government does.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
I did see that you had a list of the different funding sources that you can go after to, to do some of these things. So, I guess it's a matter of us getting that moving.
Yeah, yeah. One of the other things that we're doing in, in Bucks County is we're trying to develop a list of grant programs.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to provide, we're gonna start sending out a newsletter, starting this month.
Okay.
And we're gonna provide a link to sort of a master sheet of grant programs that are available, hopefully organized by topic. So literally, the municipality's gonna say, well, we need money for this, let's take a look at what's available. And we're gonna provide some links to websites and phone numbers.
Okay.
So that's one of the things that we're, we're doing. But I, I think that the, the programs that I show in the back of the updated, especially the updated blueprint, is a, is a good place to start.
Okay.
There's, there's programs that people aren't even aware of, like...
I saw it.
Yeah. The Industrial Development Authority, and I know, Visit Bucks County is gonna do a grant program for promotion-type activities.
Yeah, I think that's website.
Yeah, so those are the things that people may not be, people in the municipality may not be aware of.
Right, right.
But yeah, I think organization is really the big thing. Who's gonna run this? Who's gonna spearhead these, these efforts? Who are people gonna go to and say, I wanna volunteer? Because I know in this room, there's probably about 10, 20 people who could probably just sign up right now and say, I wanna volunteer for something. Okay, so, it's important to have that entity that, and that's their sole responsibility, not get distracted by something else. So, we're gonna work on, you know, Pennsylvania, or, I'm not Pennsylvania, I should, yeah, but what's the parallel on the way up there?
Delmon.
Yeah, Delmon. Yeah, so, they wanna work on the Bridge Street Core. And that's, that's what that organization should be focused on, is that, that Bridge Street Core, that downtown area that we all think of as Morrisville's downtown.
Okay.
So I think that's another reason, that's another thing that I think is very important in terms of organization.
Yeah, I remember Lynn Bush saying that you can have a lot of ideas and everybody starts to go in different directions.
Yes.
Once you get all that data together, it's, you have to pick a project.
Yes.
Or an area to start and then build out from, and then focus on that to get it done.
And you wanna start with some small victories.
Right.
You mean, certainly you can have an organization put together and you could start, well, two or three things. And that's, that's helpful too, because not everything's gonna get done at once. You can get something done, you could promote that, and say, hey, look what else we have going on, get that done. In the meantime, you start, you know, it's like, what are our next steps? So, so that, that organization doesn't get distracted and they have a series of successes that they can tell.
They can actually see.
Yeah.
Very nice. Is there anyone else that would like to ask any questions, anything to the audience?
Diane Hughes, Buckley, Barclay Avenue. I really liked your presentation, I think it's great. I have a question about the Anthony's Pizza Park.
Yeah.
I'm a certified arborist. You made electric wires disappear and trees appear in a very, very harsh environment with a lot of black tar, a lot of concrete, and a lot of exhaust.
So, so those are concepts, I do wanna say. Those are concept plans, those are not. We really think you should do that. So, literally what we're trying to do is show visually what those transformations, physical transformations can look like on properties that people are already aware of. We do have, we do understand the street tree problem, and we do understand that certain trees are not good for certain sites. I had our planner who did those concepts, he did not look and try to make sure that it was the species of tree that would hold up under those harsh urban conditions. The planning commission does have a street tree list. We do have a list of street trees that are more suitable in that urban environment, they won't grow too high under the electrical wires, and they're more suitable for that harsh urban environment. But we also have to understand that they doubt, you know, street trees, unless they're tough beyond tough, they are gonna have trouble lasting, you know, 20 or more years. There's gonna be a point where they're gonna have to be replaced. So, again, those are, those are concessions.
Well, thank you very much. Sorry.
Is there a liaison with the planning commission that council, Scott, the borough champion, utilize to formulate a game plan, like you said, for zoning to sort of homogenize the plan is, emptying wise, things like that? Is there something that you reach out to kind of time to get over the hump, to get...
Yeah, yeah, I'm available. Certainly, I'm available. Right. If we were talking about, like, a whole new project, you know, there would have to be some discussion that took place between my executive director and council. But, you know, on a day-to-day basis, I'm, you know, certainly available to answer any questions or appoints or resources. I could do that.
Right, if you have someone in the office that does that intermediary for you, if you're busy, would like someone to help you?
I'm always busy, but, yeah. But I'm available to, to help out.
And is there any kind of like a template of zoning that I can...
Well, Montgomery County has a town center district. If you go to Montgomery County's website, they have a model one, it's called our Town Center Regulations, that I think are pretty good. So, there are other templates out there that are available.
I think you mentioned Alvin Salem, are you doing a lot of their one stretch?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend...
Is it that, that's to spot specifically?
It's four main zoning, and I know that the idea for four main zoning was in Morrisville Comprehensive Plan. I think the board of the planning commission has investigated that. We don't think it's really right for an area like Morrisville's downtown. We don't just, we just, too difficult to implement, and I don't think you would end up with what you would desire.
Yeah, you're right.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Thank you so much for coming out and all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is from, is a Banning, Banning Treatment Center. Is someone here to talk about that?
I think it's in Buckley. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm someone following this presentation. I'm thankful that we're gonna fit the demographic that he was talking about. I'm very thankful that we are going to...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I might have missed, did you mispronounce your name?
I'm sorry, Gloria Feithel. I'm the CFO for JBT of PA, who owns 705 Crown Street.
Did you spell that last name, please?
Episum Frank RUI, Episum Frank ELD. And also the CFO for Banning Treatment Center. And again, I'm glad I'm following that presentation, because we will definitely follow quite a bit of what was pointed out in the renovations for 705 Crown.
Did you microphone mark me? I think, yeah, drag me, yeah, into it, Mary. I'm sorry.
Okay. Really wanted to thank everybody.
No, you can, oh, I can? Yeah, absolutely.
First of all, I want to apologize personally for all the miscommunication and the misconceptions of what has been put out there recently by unknown to me sources. And I'm here to address some of that tonight. I also feel somewhat of a disadvantage regarding the misconceptions and the rumors. Apparently, there was a letter issued to the tenants of 705 Crown after the sale went through. Intimidating, it came from JBT PA, who owns the property, and myself. There's only been one letter that came from the owner of that property, and it was from me, letting them know we were not gonna renew the leases. We have a duty, according to the leases we inherited, that we have to inform them in a 30 days or 60 days in advance that we will not be renewing the leases. That was it. And I've sent three, the same letter, first, second, and third notice. That came from me. That I can guarantee, and that I can verify. Anything other than that did not come from us, it didn't come from me. One has a 30-day clause, one has a 60, the rest have a 60. This is our legal obligation to inform the tenants that we're not renewing the leases. That's it. We're not evicting people. There's not one document to support that we're evicting anyone. A little backstory on the purchase of this beautiful property. We put an offer on the property last March. We were supposed to close in 30 days, but as most of you have told me, that our city officials, county officials, and down the line, that previous owner was not responsive to anyone or anything at any time, as long as he's owned that property. The seller did not want the tenants to know. I came up three different times and did three different inspections on their property. It's typically when we purchase a property, I'd like the city to come out zoning, landscaping, code enforcement. Before we buy a property, what's going on? Are there any problems? Are there any issues? Do you have open permits? Is there illegal rooms? Are there illegal anything on the property? I was told by, by the fire inspector twice that he couldn't come out on my recommendation because we didn't own the property yet, twice. But he also stated that he knew that property is a problem because of the previous owner. We met last week with the former mayor, the current mayor, and the chief of police. And we hopefully came to an understanding about what our intentions are and how we will be renovating the building, to make sure it is beautiful Tier 3. When people drive over that bridge, as I was told, it better look good when people drive over that bridge, because that's what you all wanna see. So I swore I would do that. Right? Did I? I did. We're putting cameras up to tie into the central station on the recommendation of the police chief. I asked about landscaping codes and color codes and what are your requirements, what are your statutes? And apparently, there weren't any. So, and again, the trees are gonna go up, the flowers are gonna go in, it will be a beautiful property. I walked in today with the chief and showed him what we were gonna do. The rafters are falling, the fire escape looks like back when I lived in New York in the 50s. It's horrible, it's dirty. Everything's gonna be redone on that property. By code. And actually, our last contractor wasn't working fast enough, so a new one met me out there today and he will be applying for permits soon. I can assure you, I did the renovations for all the properties we purchase in each state we go into. Each property inside resembles my personal interior. Not that you care what the inside looks like, just so you know. The outside, according to code, we are going to be replacing all the windows to match the new white ones. The brown ones are coming out. We're putting in the siding. I was advised today by the chief that I should probably get Pico to come out and put a nice light out there on the pole. Repair the plumbing, that was vandalized last week by the tenants. And I know it was, I had a document from the plumber that I had to call out on a Saturday. Somebody took something like a bolted hammer and smashed through the pipe. My father was a plumber. I went and touched the pipe. I wanted to make sure that it wasn't degraded or corroded or whatever. It was cast iron, and there was a big, huge hole in it. To further explain our intentions for the building, that building will be housing our clients from our treatment center in Langhorne. That's a fact. And I understand from talking to the former mayor, the current mayor, and the police chief last week, with my team, what the residents in the neighborhood and the city, city official concerns are. We're not what you're used to in a halfway situation of whatever that is. These tenants will not be walking around the neighborhood unattended. They are not allowed to be out unsupervised, or to have someone with them. Think of them as girl scouts, they have to have a buddy. They have to have a buddy, they can't go by themselves. Chopping, laundry, movies, gym, doesn't matter, somebody will be with them. There's no drugs, there's no methadone, there's no doctors, there's no nurses, there's no services. I have heard stories that, quite frankly, it's laughable to hear what people are saying. These people are just trying to live in peace and learn how to live a normal life in a safe environment. It's a safe environment. We are a joint commission accredited association in four different states. Each and every center and residence by, by the rules dictated by these regulating authorities, even if they are not individually accredited. I walked through Crown today with the police chief. There's not one smoke detector in that entire building. Now, had there been a fire, had there been a disaster, and everybody in this town knew that that place looked the way it did, was the way it was, but the old owner didn't bother or didn't have time, and nobody pushed it? Where I come from, code and zoning, I have to go before the magistrate. I have to sit there and explain why I didn't put black tar properly, or why my spacing in the parking lot is not exactly 19.5 inches. I have to explain why the tree is dying, I have to pull it out. You can't have two boats in your yard, you can only have one. Nobody's done anything about that building for years. In conclusion, I would like to say that these are people that have come out of the center and are just trying to find their way again. And thankfully, we fit the demographic as well, so that was interesting. They have a right to live in peace, like everybody in this room. Everybody in this room. Everybody in this room. They are a protected class of people. They are a protected class. More than 64,000 people died from drug overdoses in 2016. 4,600 of them were in Pennsylvania alone. I know we want it all to go away, believe me, I'm with you. I wanted to go away myself. I don't want them living in my neighborhood, living next door to me, living next door to my children. But you know what? One out of seven, it sucks, one out of seven in this room have someone affected by it, or know someone affected by it. We're not here to give the drugs, we're here to try to help them get off. That's it. That is it. I'm the face of the company. This is my job, this is what I do. I have cards here, I'm gonna leave my cards here for everybody, my personal cell phone number's on it. The chief has my number, the former mayor and the current mayor have my personal cell phone number, and everyone in this room can take it 24/7. Call anytime, for any reason, any question, any issue, anything, call me. Oh, today. So it was bad enough that all the documents being circulated about us, it was bad enough. But today, today, I'm sure everybody had this wonderful document.
Hello?
I don't know, there's a thousand of them, they're everywhere. And again, I'm gonna give you my card. If you wanna come see what it's about, you wanna come see what we do, you want to come see it, you are all invited. You are all invited. This is a farce. This borders, this document alone borders on civil rights discrimination. One document, right here. Because none of it's true. Okay, let me, I'm sorry, let me backtrack. There could be one or two items true on here. But today, since I knew I was coming here and I had to prepare this, I didn't wanna sit here and say, oh, this isn't true, that's not true. Most of it is not.
Tell us what's not.
We do not accept Medicaid predatory boarding house for exploited addicts whose only goal is billing the government for Medicaid and state money. We don't do that. We don't do that.
I didn't see that document.
We don't do that.
Did you see that document?
We're in time, right, please, sir?
Why don't you just...
This is not a QA.
We all work for this company and this industry because we have a loved one that has struggled, or we have struggled ourselves. We have an emotional drive to help these people and find it disturbing one would present us in any other light. Give us a chance, give me a chance. I have promised the former mayor, the current mayor, and the police chief, give me the chance. Let me fix the property, let me fix it, let me make it look nice. I guarantee you, I won't paint it dark blue, I won't paint it sun yellow, and it won't be orange, because there's no code that I have to follow. I'll pick a good color, I will put good trees in, and I'll make it nice. Okay? That, I promise you. I have one more person I'd like to introduce, and we're gonna try to be brief.
Excuse me, I hate to, could you just tell us what it is that you know?
I'm a, sorry, I'm a simple...
And I, excuse our ignorance, but we, it says, Banning Treatment Centers.
Banning Treat...
And I think people probably wanna know what you are, what you do, what your mission is, and you should start there and then...
We're talking about the property, though, the property has well varied on what's in Langhorne. We're here about the property and what we think is gonna happen to the property, and what everybody's afraid about is what's gonna happen to the property. That's why we're here.
Madam President, yeah?
Yes.
Thank you. How are you, Gloria?
Hi, good, thank you.
So, I actually, I actually arranged to have you guys to come in and speak today. Well, I'm a little disappointed. The understanding I had was you were gonna come in and give us some information on what Banning Treatments is, what you guys do, so the residents can have a better understanding of what you will be doing in that building. We're not questioning whether or not the building will be required to be up kept. We have a very good code enforcement company we just hired, and they will make sure of that, right?
Right.
The questions we have relate to what you're going, what you plan on doing there as opposed to what you plan on doing with the building. That goes through a lot of different channels and isn't kind of where we are right now. The upswell is more or less, you were talking, well, let me back up. You were talking about the misinformation out there.
Yes.
This was your opportunity to give some information and you're not really doing that, so I'm a little disappointed, I got to be honest.
You're welcome.
No, not you.
What was put before us was to come and talk about Crown. If you want to know what the Treatment Center's about in Langhorne, which has nothing to do with Crown, I can certainly tell you about it.
It was specific about what Banyan Treatment Centers is and what you'll be doing in that building, not what the building will be called.
Okay, I think I talked about it in some detail.
Thank you.
No medication, no doctors, no nurses, no methadone, no drugs of any kind. People are living there in peace, just trying to figure out what's going on in their head. No drugs, nothing. They will just exist until they're done with their 30-day, 45-days, and then they move on.
Can I ask?
Nobody?
I'm sorry. Is there any kind of like medical, doctors, nurses, that are, is it that type? I picture treatment as that.
Banyan Treatment doesn't own the house. JBT owns the house. It is not for services, it is not for doctors, it is not for anything. It's just for people who are going through whatever they're going through and they want to live in peace and figure things out for 30 days. And then they move on. It's a safe haven, it's a safe home. Nothing else goes on there. I'm sorry? It's 24/7.
We've got a chance.
Yes, bring it back, you have a chance to finish on. He asked a question, I answered it. I'm ready to stop now.
Still haven't, excuse me. What are they there, why? I'm just trying to figure out what is it that you do. I still haven't quite, I don't think I've quite answered it, I don't.
We allow people to live in peace and quiet and we house them and we feed them.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Will they be coming from another facility to freshen? Is that what this is, like a step down after rehab?
After detox. No drugs. High blood pressure medicine, possibly, and whatever other internal, feminine, whatever medications that is, which everybody else takes.
This is a form of like, I guess, like a living grid, is that what you're saying? Like that type of facility?
I don't worry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
I'm Sue Schumaker.